To my far right, on the very end, is Mr. Richard Williams, representing Western Carolina. To his left, Mr. George Weber, representing Madison. To his left and my immediate right is our Vice Chair, Mr. J.D. Young, representing Reedy Church. My name is Val Schwartz. I'm the Chairman. I represent the Bowling Green District. To my left is Dr. Carol Horton, representing Port Royal. And I want to welcome our newest member to the Planning Commission, Mr. Steve Rollins, representing the Mattapanai District. So Steve, welcome to the club. At the base of the stage, we have Mr. Craig Pennington, our County Planner. We have Mr. Brad Robinson, our Zoning Administrator. Mr. Chris McKenzie, our County Attorney. I believe those are all of the dignitaries. And we have Mr. John Voight, our IT Specialist, keeping us online. Commissioners, before we get to the agenda, I would like to make a motion to amend for a special presentation. And I so move. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Ladies and gentlemen, also in our audience, we have the distinct pleasure of having some special guests. We have Mrs. Brenda Minor, the wife of Purcell Minor. We have Felicia and Shawanda, who are their daughters. We have the granddaughter, Michaela. We have the sister, and the name goes right out of my head, Kathleen. A brother-in-law. What was your name, sir? Edwin. Godson, and my memory is going very short because I didn't write it down, so forgive me. But, yes. Godson, correct?
Son-in-law.
Son-in-law. I'm sorry. Okay. I have trouble with my own name at times, so forgive me. But there are other members of the family in support. We thought an awful lot of Purcell. Not only did Purcell give 15 years of service to the Planning Commission, but he gave service throughout his years to other areas of the county. And we just wanted to find a way to say thank you to the family for sharing him. He meant a lot to us. As a result, we have developed a resolution in reference to the remembrance and appreciation of Purcell S. Minor Jr. And I would like to take a few moments to read this presentation. Whereas Mr. Purcell S. Minor of Caroline County, Virginia, passed away on June 21st, 2024, at the age of 73. And whereas he served the citizens of Caroline County as the Mattapanai District Representative, Vice Chairman, and Chairman to the Planning Commission from January of 2014 to his passing. And whereas Mr. Minor's perspective was a positive and significant contribution to the Planning Commission and to the citizens of Caroline County in consideration of land use and development issues that helped guide the growth of Caroline County. And whereas, following his retirement after 42 years with Virginia Power Dominion Energy, Mr. Minor continued to serve his community as a member of the C.W. Edwards Funeral Home Staff. And whereas through his active personal involvement in this community, Mr. Minor touched the lives of many in Caroline and made a lasting impact on the county and its citizens. Now therefore be it resolved that the Caroline County Planning Commission hereby expresses its deep sympathy to the family of Purcell S. Minor Jr. upon his untimely passing and expresses its appreciation for his dedicated service and the many contributions he made to the betterment of Caroline County. It is adopted this 22nd day of August, 2024. It is signed by myself as Chairman and Mr. J.D. Young as Vice Chair. What I would like to do is have Mrs. Minor, her daughters, anyone else in the family, please come forward to the foot of the stage where we will make a formal presentation of this resolution. And I'm going to ask Mr. J.D. Young, our Vice Chair, to make the physical presentation. And if the remaining commissioners will please join me as we make this presentation.
Good evening, family.
Good evening.
Thank you all for coming out. On behalf of Caroline County Planning Commission, we again thank you all so very much for lending Purcell to us. And he was a significant asset to the county and the community. And we just totally appreciate him, appreciate you all. Thank you so very much. God bless you all. We are here for anything that you need. And certainly, you know, y'all can reach out to me for whatever you need as well. On behalf of Caroline County.
Whatever is easiest for our elite photographer. I've got everybody in view.
Okay.
Mr. Pennington, if you would be so kind as to read the procedure for public hearings.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission. Purpose of a public hearing is for the Caroline County Planning Commission to listen carefully to the verbal expression imposition and opinion from the citizens of Caroline County. Public hearings are not question-and-answer sessions or debates, and all statements should be addressed to the Chair. When members of the public offer comment, they need to clearly state their name and voting district prior to making comments. Applicants or representatives of the applicant will be allowed 15 minutes to introduce information regarding the matter advertised for public hearing. All comments are to be pertinent to the issue being considered. Persons speaking at public hearings are respectfully requested to keep comments brief, not to exceed three minutes, and to address only those issues pertinent to the matters advertised for public hearing. After the public hearing has been closed, the applicant or representatives of the applicant will be allowed 10 minutes to address any issues identified by the public.
Thank you, sir. Members of the Commission, before we proceed further in our packets, we have the minutes from the June and July meeting of the Planning Commission. Have you had a chance to review the minutes? Are there any additions or corrections? Hearing none. Is there a motion regarding the June 27th, 2024 minutes of the Planning Commission?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that the minutes for the June 2024 minutes be accepted as read and produced.
Second. Motion by Mr. Young, seconded by Mr. Weber. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Regarding the minutes from July 25th, 2024 minutes, have you had a chance to review those minutes? And are there any additions or corrections? Hearing none. Is there a motion regarding the July 25th, 2024 minutes?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the July 25th meetings, minutes from the meeting.
Second.
Motion by Dr. Horton, seconded by Mr. Young for approval. Any further discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Motion carries. All right, Mr. Pennington, SPEX 062024.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission. Your first public hearing tonight, SPEX 062024 for Verizon Wireless. The applicant is requesting approval of a special exception permit for a 199-foot monopole communication tower on parcel 73-8-9. The tower will be located within 100 by 100 leased area on the 100-acre property. The property is owned rural preservation and located on the south side of File Road, approximately 2,500 feet from Kids Fork Road. The collapse zone for the tower is wholly contained within the subject property. A 40 by 40 equipment compound surrounded by an eight-foot chain link fence will house the tower and will be accessed via File Road. The site is largely wooded and will remain wooded with the exception for the disturbance required for the tower and entrance to the site. There is RPA located to the south of the tower, but no encroachments into the RPA buffer will occur.
Thank you, sir. Commissioners, do you have any questions of Mr. Pennington at this time? There being none, public hearing regarding this special exception is now open. I'm sorry, the applicant.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission. My name is Preston Lloyd. I'm an attorney at the law firm of Williams Mullen, and I'm appearing on behalf of the applicant, Verizon Wireless, on behalf of the property owner, Caroline Holdings LLC. Given the thorough presentation from staff, which we appreciate, I'll make some brief remarks and would welcome any questions or interruptions from the Commission as I proceed. If we could advance the slide, please. The site was identified here. This is just a vicinity slide to try to orient the Commission with the location based on Sparta Road and its intersection with File Road. Next slide, please. Further zooming in on the location, you can see its forested condition based on the satellite footage. Next slide, please. Next slide, if you would, please. This highlights a number of important attributes for the Commission's awareness. The first being that this site is located more than 770 feet from the nearest off-site residence. This also notes the distance to setbacks. And if you could go to the next slide as we zoom in, you'll see that it is situated outside of the repair and management area with clear access to File Road. Next slide, please. Further zooming in on the orientation of the access road. Next slide, please. I'll highlight briefly here the compound for the facility. You'll see the monopole at the center of the depiction of the site plan, and it's well screened, notwithstanding the existing vegetation that will ultimately surround the property. You'll see that it has additional plantings that will help to increase the buffering from visibility for the ground equipment and the generator. Next slide, please. As mentioned, it's a 190-foot monopole with the lightning rod that makes it a total of 199 feet. The material is galvanized steel. There will be no lighting, and there will be a six-foot tall security fence with barbed wire to ensure the security of the facility and its equipment. Next slide, please. As noted by staff, this is designated agricultural preservation. However, I should hasten to note that this proposed facility will not interfere with agricultural production. It's carefully cited so as to not impact any land reserved for conservation or rural protection or environmentally sensitive areas, and will not negatively impact existing or future housing development because this property is not developable due to its repair and management areas. And so we wanted to make sure the Commission was well aware of how well this project aligns with the county's comprehensive plan. Next slide, please. Finally, four points for your consideration, and this justifies why this project does meet the requirements of the county's regulations. First, that improved wireless communications will enhance public safety, economic development, telecommuting, and remote learning. There are no existing towers in the area to be served. We note that the closest existing facilities are 2.5 miles to the northeast, 6.6 miles to the southwest, and 4 miles to the northwest. Further, no disruption to the surrounding neighborhood or impact on present or future agricultural preservations will be noted, and the facility will not require any county resources. And so further evidence that in our opinion, this does align with the comprehensive plan, and we're pleased that the staff report generally agrees. So with that, I'll conclude my presentation. We're delighted that Verizon Wireless can continue to expand service and coverage and reliability to the residents of Caroline and would respectfully request your recommendation to the Board for approval. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Just one question for me, if you don't mind.
Yes, sir.
You do not, or do you anticipate, construction during October through January 2nd?
There is... Let me ask, in terms of the construction schedule, do we have information on that at this time?
Construction probably starts next year.
Mr. Chairman, the answer, I'm informed, is no. Construction will begin next year, but not during the time period that you just referenced.
Okay, very good, because that's prime deer hunting territory, and we don't want to mess it up.
We understand. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to speak regarding this matter? Yeah. My mind is elsewhere tonight on something else. Please forgive me. The public hearing regarding this special exception is now open. Is there anyone wishing to speak regarding this matter? Anyone wishing to speak regarding this matter? Please come forward, state your name and your voting district, please.
I don't know what the voting district is. I'm sorry. My name is Stephen Seiler, and I'm adjoining a piece of property off this, off to the northwest side of your property there. My question is, am I going to sit here on my front porch and look at a 200-foot tower all day long? Is this approved, or is this in question to be done?
The applicant may wish to respond to that. This is not a question answered.
Yeah, I understand that, but that's... I walked in here with this notice and...
All right, sir. After the public hearing is closed, the applicant can respond to that.
All right. But I mean, is this a done deal, is what I'm asking?
Pardon?
Okay, by whom? These guys? Oh, okay. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Anyone else wishing to comment on this matter? Anyone wishing to speak regarding this matter? Seeing no one coming forward, the public hearing is now closed. Would the applicant care to respond?
Yes, sir. Again, Preston Lloyd, on behalf of the applicant, Mr. Chairman, and members of the Commission. The question was asked by a member of the public as to the visibility. We believe that due to the heavily forested nature of the site and its distance from adjacent properties, that this is well suited for the facility that's proposed. Its visibility will be mitigated, given the considerable distance. However, as the Commission is probably aware, cellphone technology relies on a line of sight. So a cellphone tower that is completely invisible is one that is not functional to the public and is not providing the services that we all rely upon. So there is a balance, and we believe that this site has been well-vetted and compared with other options, that this will provide the service that serves the public for the reasons described during our presentation, while to the fullest extent possible, trying to take advantage of natural buffering to mitigate the visual impact to adjacent residents. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioners, you have any further questions? There being no further questions, Commissioners, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman, we're a special exception request. appears to be generally consistent with the goals and objectives of the comprehensive plan and future land use map. And whereas a public necessity, convenience, general welfare, and good zoning practices warrant the approval of this project. So I recommend that SPEX 062024 be forwarded to the Board of Supervisors with a recommendation of approval.
Seconding. Second.
Motion by Mr. Young, seconded by Mr. Weber and Mr. Williams. Commissioners, is there any further discussion regarding this matter? There being no further discussion, all those in favor are forwarding this to the Board of Supervisors with a recommendation of approval. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it unanimously. This matter will be forwarded to the Board of Supervisors with a recommendation of approval. All right. RZ 032024, Carmel Church Investments LLC owner, Wilton Acquisition LLC applicant.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, second public hearing tonight. RZ 032024 for Belmont Villas. Next slide, please. The applicant is requesting approval for rezoning from B1 Business to PRD Planned Residential... Excuse me. The applicant is requesting approval for rezoning from B1 Business to PRD Planned Residential Development to allow for a 61-lot age-restricted subdivision. The subject parcel was rezoned to B1 in 2004 in conjunction with the Belmont subdivision. One commercial project was completed on the adjacent parcel to the west, which is currently occupied by Pax Urgent Care. The proposed rezoning would encompass 9.8 acres of the existing 20-acre parcel. The remaining 10.3 acres would remain B1 and undeveloped at this time. The subject parcel is located on the north side of Route 207, approximately 0.3 miles west of the Carmel Church Loop, Route 207 intersection. The parcel is bounded on the west by Belmont Boulevard and the multi-tenant structure housing Pax Urgent Care, on the north by the Belmont subdivision, and on the west by Traverse Street Extension for the Belmont residential subdivision. The Traverse Street Extension will connect the Belmont subdivision to Route 207 at the Enterprise Parkway intersection. Next slide, please. The GDP shows 61 attached villas in a five-to-seven unit clusters located on 9.8 acres. A landscaping buffer is shown to provide screening between this project and the existing Belmont subdivision. Any buffer removed for construction will be replanted. The roads within the subdivision are proposed to remain private and be maintained by the POA. The applicant has proffered to construct the remainder of Colonel Armstead Drive in accordance with the original design of the Belmont subdivision. At the time, the Traverse Street Extension is constructed for the connection for Colonel Armstead Drive and the pedestrian accommodations will be completed. Per the proposal, Colonel Armstead Drive would remain a private road and be maintained by the Belmont Villas POA and the commercial subdivision POA when developed and created. Pedestrian accommodations are provided internally within the subdivision and along Colonel Armstead Drive for connectivity. All villas will contain a garage and driveway for parking. Driveways shown on the GDP are 18 feet long before reaching the sidewalk. Staff notes, the standard full-size truck is approximately 20 feet long, which could impede the pedestrian accommodations by overhanging sidewalks. The county is currently changing the parking regulations to a 20-foot-long parking space as a requirement. The remaining lot of 10.3 acres would remain zoned B1 and be accessed via Colonel Armstead Drive as it develops. Next slide, please. The comprehensive plan shows this area as commercial office in the Carmel Church Community Plan with a residential designation directly adjacent. A portion of this parcel containing 10.3 acres is proposed to remain zoned B1 Business for commercial office use. The comprehensive plan notes under the Future Land Use Section in Chapter 8 that boundaries of areas designated for specific land uses should be considered general and approximate. Age-restricted housing is the only type of residential product not included within the Belmont subdivision. The residential use surrounded by Belmont residential subdivision and providing originally planned connectivity within the Belmont subdivision would be consistent with the comprehensive plan. Agency comments have been provided, and the applicant has provided a comment response letter detailing the comments addressed. VDOT and utilities are currently reviewing the second submission of the subdivision design. Next slide, please. The applicant has offered the following proffers for consideration. The subdivision would be age-restricted to a 55-plus community. Colonel Armstead Drive will be maintained by the Shops and Carmel Church POA and the Belmont Villas POA. This proffer does provide for perpetual maintenance of Colonel Armstead Drive when the connection to Traverse Street is made. Staff has a concern about existing Belmont subdivision residents utilizing Colonel Armstead Drive to access the traffic signal at Enterprise Drive once Traverse Street is extended and regarding the amount of traffic that could be generated by the commercial portion of the site on Colonel Armstead Drive. The maintenance and repair of Colonel Armstead Drive could become costly. Private roads must be constructed and maintained to VDOT standards even when private. Internal roads will be maintained by the Belmont Villas POA. Colonel Armstead Drive and the pedestrian accommodations will be constructed to connect with the Traverse Street once Traverse Street is constructed. And the property will be developed in substantial conformance with the GDP. And villa architectural features will be consistent with the Belmont Villas GDP plan per C2. That concludes the presentation, and I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Commissioners, do you have any questions to Mr. Pennington at this time?
Well, first I'd like to ask a simple question. All these plans say one-story building, and yet everything shows two stories. Are they two-story buildings, or are they one-story buildings?
At the time of original submission, the architecturals were not proffered. And so the architecturals didn't mean that's what needed to be built there. At this time of second submission, the architecturals have been proffered. And so that's more of a question for the applicant as to if they're going to be one-story or two-story structures.
Thank you, sir.
If they're going to be two-story structures, then the GDP should be changed to note that they're all two-story structures.
Thank you.
Just to clarify, because the acreage is a little confusing the way it's written, but 61 lots on 20 acres? Just to clarify, because the acreage is a little confusing the way it's written, but sixty one lots on twenty acres?
Nine point eight.
Okay, so it's that first number, sixty one. So sixty one units are gonna be on nine point eight acres.
That's correct.
Thank you.
And this is being um considered rezoned from commercial.
It would be correct, it would be going from B one commercial to PRD residential. The entire lot is twenty acres, as Ms. Horton noted. Uh, this rezoning would only be for nine point eight of the acres. The ten point three acres that are on the south side closest to two oh seven would remain commercial, and you would still have a commercial front along two oh seven.
Thank you.
Mr. Pennington, the Pax facility is on the western end of this tract of land. Is Pax encompassed within that nine point eight acres?
No.
Completely separate?
No, sir, they're a completely separate parcel.
Alright, sir. And shouldn't the driveways be twenty feet long to be in compliance with the parking space regulations that we just approved?
The parking space regulations have been approved by you, but do not go to the board until September tenth. So I made the statement that the county is attempting to change the parking space size, but at this time, the regulation is still eighteen feet.
Alright, sir, thank you. Commissioners, anything further? Thank you, Mr. Pennington. Would the applicant care to speak?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, uh members of the commission, my name is Henry Wilson, and I represent uh Wilton Acquisitions. I'm not an attorney, like it was, but I'll keep this short.
That's Wilton, not Wilson, correct?
Yes, sir, Wilson.
Wilson, okay.
Wilton, T O N.
I got you.
Yeah, okay. Um, I originally, um, I'm up here uh developing seventy one lots off of Coolwater. Travel win for the final um final lot or the final plan submitted and approval up up there now. And also am in Ashland with another hundred and twenty five unit development too. So I'm up in this area developing and have been for a while now. Originally, I came in and was gonna go ahead, and I'd requested townhouses on this site. But I, the planning commission sat me down, or the planning staff sat me down, and they told me that what they really needed was not any more townhouses, but again, some age restricted product. There was no more age restricted product available. And I think D R Horton had actually done the last couple of lots, I think it was Maple Maple Grove. So we converted the plan, and now we've come back with the um the plan you see before you. Um, as far as, I want to thank Greg for that nice presentation and everything. He's pretty much condensed everything uh that we have that the that it will, it does conform or it's allowed under the um under the land use uh comprehensive plan. We are um, we redid the proffers according to some of the concerns um that the staff had. By putting in the age restricted units, there's obviously less traffic. The other people, the older people aren't driving at the same time, so it doesn't create uh any type of traffic situation. Um, obviously, your schools are not in any way um uh you know, affected in in this relationship either. Uh, we will go ahead, I'll just, yeah, we'll go ahead and and take the parking areas out to twenty feet instead of waiting to, you know, to change it later. I'll tell my engineers to go ahead and reconfigure the plan. Um, the units are two stories, um, most everything is on the first floor. The two stories, usually there's two bedrooms and a bath upstairs for like when their their uh family comes to visit. So usually that's what that's for. Almost all the, all the living is one on one level uh with master bedrooms on the la- on the one level. Usually, storage and maybe an extra bedroom are upstairs in the age restricted type of product. Other than that, I'm, I'd be happy to answer any questions uh that you might have.
Alright, sir, thank you. To your knowledge right now, Belmont Boulevard and Traverse Street, are those public or private?
Um, I, that's, we're gonna be private roads, and I think um.
May- maybe that's.
Colonel Colonel uh Armstead is also gonna be a private road.
Not necessarily, sir.
I said?
Not necessarily.
After, when I was reading the report, I thought that they said that they wanted it to be a, and that because the HOA is gonna, we're gonna, there's a um, um, there's an agreement in existence that that um allows for myself and also the the business to maintain that road with uh under the HOA. So I, you know.
Unless I am sorely mistaken, I believe it's still up in the air whether or not the county is going to approve whether or not that is public or private. And I could be wrong.
We can go either way, that doesn't, you know, we're gonna put the road in according to the standards, whether it be private or public, they're the same standards.
If even if it's private, it has to be to VDOT standard.
Right, exactly, so it's the same construction cost and everything, it's just how, you know, whatever you guys depend on how you want it. Uh, now Traverse is another thing, you would know that answer, I believe. That will be a public road.
Yes, sir, because there's gonna be a four signal traffic light.
Right.
Traverse Way in two oh seven.
Yes, sir.
Just as it is at uh Bellwood in two oh seven.
Yes.
So.
Yeah, well, we'll we'll go either way according to uh what the county wants. And as we go through the plan approval and stuff, you know, that'll, or I guess before we get to the board of supervisors, it's up to y'all.
Alright, sir.
But we're in agreement to go either way.
Okay, and I appreciate that.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm not trying to pin anybody to the wall. I just wanna make sure we we have a clear understanding.
I'm very flexible.
So. Yes, ma'am, the uh PRD. You're familiar with what I'm speaking of, the PRD, the planned residential development on the uh commercial side?
Um, yes, I think.
Alright. What if someone decides not to pursue that section, that ten point eight acres, whatever it is, uh into commercial, but to go residential or something else?
Well, the the owners are here, and I think that they're they're, I think that they're going uh to uh develop that under the B one, the period piece in front.
Right, but they can always come and ask for rezoning on that.
Yes, sir, yeah, they they could, but I think the plan now, once I put the road in, that's gonna access that that business. Uh, I think the question was, when I, when I spoke to them originally, was that did they need twenty acres of commercial? No. Do I need ten? Yes, they did need ten. So I think they're gonna keep their plan uh from air discussions. Um, they were gonna keep that uh for business. And also, it'll, it it would go ahead and offer some areas that that might be helpful for the people, you know, in in the residential housing um to come over, certainly the care facility in the back. They may even walk over there if they were not feeling well and stuff, it's certainly an asset to them anyway. So hopefully, some other type of development in the front will give them a lot of opportunity to for certain services.
My concern would would be this, uh, and this is why I'm asking about Colonel Armstead. I, once the commercial side is completed and and active, I don't know if there would be uh ingress and egress from Route two oh seven or not, or whether the traffic would have to come in on Belmont Boulevard or Traverse Way and then come down Colonel Armstead in order to gain access to whatever businesses are gonna be there. So that that's why I I'm a bit concerned uh about whether it's gonna be public or private.
Well, the plan's always been for that to go ahead and connect to Traverse, has it not?
Yes, sir.
Right.
But but now it's come up uh that it wants to be private, and and that's that's where I have some concerns. For this reason, uh, the cost to maintain a section of road like that would be pretty expensive. And those costs would be borne by the uh commercial entities and possibly the people residing in the fifty five plus area. So that that can get to be quite costly. And especially if you're dealing with folks in the retirement age bracket, which I am proud to be a member. Uh, some of us are on fixed incomes. So, you know, additional cost for road maintenance uh could be a burden.
Like I said, it would be fine with me for it to go ahead and be um public versus private. And I think that that would work into taking care of those problems. Um, that would be something that I would need to talk over with the owners, that you would have, would do have a problem one way or the other, if it's, so, they control that LLC, so.
Right.
They're they're fine.
I understand that, so you don't have final say on it?
No, but that's why I'm asking them, but I'm, I have half say. So at this point, I'm fine with that, and we can make that a condition going forward to the board.
I was also looking at the memo from Mr. Henry Wilson.
That would, yes, me.
That you, well, they've got Wilson, I mean, Wilton on the.
Well, no, I am Wilson.
Okay.
Yes, I'm Wilton.
Okay.
Yeah, it's the right guy, yeah.
Okay, uh, any relation, D Carlton Wilson, the builder out in Washington?
He was my father.
Was he really?
Yes. He died about five years ago.
Knew your father for many years, going back to when I was fifteen years old, if that tells you how long.
Why, yeah, I know how old he was. I'm seventy one, if that gives you an idea.
So I, and I guess, I I just don't want to see later on uh minds being changed, because you said in your memo that you planned to regarding the commercial. And plans, as we all know, are subject to change. So, you know, uh, I think the the commercial development would be a very good idea, but that's a decision you're gonna have to make further down the road.
Right, but I do agree with you on the um the road and it being public versus or private versus public.
Yeah, because you have Road A, B, C, and D uh listed on here. And is that encompassing everything on the north side of Colonel Armstead?
And now what's your question exactly on?
Alright, sir, you see on the large.
Okay, I've got the little one, yes.
Okay, uh, Road A.
Which one?
Road B, Road C, and Road D.
Okay, I couldn't, I can't see that small here. Okay, yes, those are all my interior roads.
And since those are interior and not connected to Traverse Street or uh Belmont, Bellwood Boulevard, you know, I don't think that there would be any problem with those being private.
No, they should be private.
But but I just do have a concern about Colonel Armstead.
And I think that's a good concern, I'm glad you brought it to our attention. I think it's a, again, to protect them long term.
Yes.
So that that they're not overwhelmed with any additional expense. I I think um we'll we'll convert the proffer to go to go public on that road.
Okay, thank you, sir.
No problem.
That's all I have. Dr. Horton?
Uh, yes, um, just a few questions. So how many bedrooms are downstairs? You mentioned upstairs.
There's always one downstairs, there's a main floor, private or main bedroom. And there are usually two bedrooms and a bath upstairs. And usually, um, they, again, one's used for storage, or so sometimes both of them are used for storage. But usually, you know, family comes and visits, stays a couple of nights, so they wanna have availability for another bedroom upstairs.
So is there any restrictions on how long family can stay?
Um, under the regulation, um, I think they have like thirty thirty days, and the person can, uh, around nineteen years old or something. But nobody can stay after that, it's not, it's not allowed. It's a federal law, it follows the federal law on that.
Okay, and that's the only questions I had from you with from Mr. Pennington. He mentioned something about a concern on one of the roads. Can you repeat that?
Yeah, it's it's what Mr. Schwartz was saying, Colonel Armstead. Um, you know, people from the Belmont subdivision may use that, especially on the southwestern side of the Belmont subdivision, to come over to Traverse Street rather than circle around and come to backside. The people on the north side, they'll probably come straight over to Traverse without that. But there's a portion of Belmont that's gonna be easier for them to come across Colonel Armstead. And then, once the commercial portion develops, um, then you're gonna have other outside traffic coming in there. But uh Mr. Schwartz covered the staff's concern.
Okay, thank you, that's all I have.
Mr. Wilson, just one for quick follow up.
Yes, sir.
Uh, on the commercial side, when you go uh to develop that, I I'm just curious, you you don't have to tell me if you don't want, there's no no ill feeling about it. But I was just wondering, what type of commercial customer uh are you gonna target or desire to have in there?
Um, I'm not involved with the commercial part of it, I'm mostly a residential developer, although I've developed commercial, but, and I do a little bit of that, but mostly residential. Uh, their plan is to continue on, um, they've held it for a number of years to continue on with the the development of the commercial.
Okay, and here again, just.
I don't know what type.
Curiosity, and I I don't know if someone else can answer that, yes, sir, please.
Good evening.
And here again, it's just curiosity, are we looking at a Sheetz or Home Depot or, you know, office buildings?
Thank you, I'm Donnie Hart from Virginia Properties. Um, our intent with that is to develop it as a commercial development uh project. We've talked to various uh businesses such as Sheetz, Seven Eleven, um Dollar General, uh you name it, we've talked to them, and there is interest, just not yet. So we feel like these rooftops, uh, in addition to the uh additional expansion of Belmont behind us, will help bring inch more interest on the commercial side. We wanna bring businesses that are gonna be beneficial to the community, restaurants, other services, uh, you know, anything, grocery stores, um, we don't have a set uh list of tenants yet, but those are the people we're going after.
Okay, very good, because it, just to me, uh, if it were all to be office or dentist, or a lawyer, or a railroad engineer, or whatever you have, they're gonna generate less public traffic than you you would have if you had, such as a Sheetz, a McDonald's, or a Pizza Hut, whatever you put in, that that's gonna generate the traffic. And that's where I tie in my concerns for the traffic volume on Colonel Armstead. So, you know, that's where I'm coming from, but thank you very much for that, I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioners, anyone else have questions?
Yeah, I have a few questions, um, did you wanna say something, Chris? Okay. Um, this appears to be an asset for the baby boomers. However, um, I don't see anything in here for adult facilities for recreation, parks, quiet area, things of that nature, did I oversee, did I overlook something? Well, we did a um a small little park area in there, and we also did a lot of walking trails around the back and through, if they were around the project, plus put in sidewalks and stuff in the front so that you, they can go ahead and do that. So, um, we we've, in fact, that was during the the process, we were developing the plan. Uh, the staff had asked us to go ahead and accommodate that, so we had, we had put in some areas where it's to some benches where when, on their walks, they could go ahead, sit down and and take it easy and so on. So we've done uh what the what the area will, you know, what that site will allow and so on. So they'll have plenty of walking areas, and they can go ahead and walk down to the commercial site and back and so on. So it should be, you know, uh uh enough to give them plenty of exercise. That's good, that's good for the exercises. That was asked, and we did it. What if, you know, I'm I'm looking more at the seniors not being stuck in their homes all the time, and they happen to drive somewhere all the time just to have some type of facility, some game areas, recreation areas, where they have their families to come in, they don't just have to uh maybe a holiday party or something of that nature. You never hadn't considered any type of recreation facilities? Well, just the recre- recreation facilities there in the area and so on. Well, just the recreation facilities there in the area and so on. And then, I think, when the, when the development of the commercial comes in, hopefully, you know, maybe some fitness, you know, for, you know, light fitness duty and so on, they could go work out in there. Once I put that road in, that will open up, the commercial people will get serious about actually doing something with that commercial property. Until that road goes in, there's really not gonna be a, a lot of interest in doing anything there until that road is taken care of. Once it is, hopefully, we'll have some uses that'll be good for them there, too.
I understand. On the plans here, it appears that you have two-car garage, but yet, yet your illustration shows, look like it's a one-car garage.
But it's just one large garage. It's just like one and a half garages.
One and a half?
Yeah. And you can, you can park outside, too, but there's at least one. But it's one and a half. It's not a small little garage and stuff, or it.
Okay.
But it's not, it's not segmented into two cars. A lot of times, they don't have, nobody has two cars anymore.
Yeah, I was gonna say, that's mighty, mighty tight to have two cars to try to fit in there. Okay, so I purchased your property as a senior. I pass away, what happens then?
Yeah, your family has it, and they, they go ahead and they sell it to the next person. It's not, it's, it's not like, like my parents lived in Cross, Cedarfield, and that, that's where you bought it from the church. And you paid a fee, and you took it, and you paid a monthly fee to go ahead and maintain it. When they died, you give it back to them, and then they sell it to somebody else. This is a fee simple type of arrangement. They actually own the property. They own the facility, and then they can sell it to the next person, recoup their money, and, and do whatever.
But it's no benefit to my children, but they're not sixty-five. You know what? They would have, they would have to get, yeah, buy a realtor and.
Right.
Rell it to someone else that's that age, and, you know, that could be a, a burden on the purchaser.
They could also go ahead, they could, they'd also have the option to go ahead and rent it if they wanted to until they became sixty-five or fifty-five. It's on six, fifty-five is not that far. Now that I'm seventy-one, I can say that. But, so, I, I think if it was a number of years before they really needed it, they could just go ahead and rent it for a couple of years. And certainly, you know, you have nothing like this in the county available right now, so it'd be very easy to rent for a couple of years while they waited. So I, I think that would work out.
Okay. Those are my questions. Thank you.
I have a.
Yes, sir.
A question. Since I live in a age-restricted community, how do you intend to control the age restrictions? See, I'm, I'm eighty years old. I don't, who knows how long it's gonna go on. But anyway, I mean, I see people come in, they rent these units, or they buy these units, and then they let their thirty-six-year-old children go into the unit, and then they move on to someplace else. I've seen it. Living in an age-restricted unit, limited whole development with age restrictions. And there are so many ways to get around this. I'm just explaining to everybody. It's, it's a nice terminology to use, this age restriction. But my biggest concern is now, the terminology isn't there, but when we go and approve something because we consider it to be an age-restricted facility, how do we guarantee that that facility is going to remain that age? Fifty-five and older, I'm not picking on it.
Yes, yes, sir, yeah. It's, it's regulated. I've done, I've done these communities before. It's regulated, and when the people move in and, and basically close on the unit, they have to be fifty-five or older and so on. And then we, they actually check it to make sure that they continue to go ahead, and only if they're gonna rent it, they only rent it to fifty-five. But the HOA actually has a responsibility to go ahead and, and inspect each, each one of those units on an ongoing basis.
So then the HOA.
HOA then would report it to the federal, it's a federal guideline that you have to follow. So they would, they would go ahead and report them, and somebody would come out and have them, you know, have them conform to, to the policy.
That's, that's fine when you talk about the Fed and so forth and so on. But my concern is, how does the county now get involved with reviewing that this is an age-restricted community, and that those people in there are at, at age?
So the way that we do this, basically, is in the proffer, the, the last line of the age restriction proffer says, "A covenant shall be recorded in a homeowners association established for the enforcement to the limit the use and occupancy of the dwellings as specified here." And so what's going on there is, I think, to your point, Mr. Weber, the county doesn't really have the, the ability to be the one policing compliance of this neighborhood with the age restrictions. So what county does is say, you have proffered in the rezoning that you will set up an HOA, and that HOA will be responsible for the enforcement of the age restriction requirements. Now, and then, and then it's the HOA's responsibility, and it, like any other HOA issue. So your neighbor doesn't like your mailbox because it's the wrong color on your HOA, they report you to the HOA Board, and the HOA Board investigates it. Same thing with the age restriction communities. You think that your neighbor's actually got a thirty-six-year-old living there, you report it to the HOA Board, the HOA Board investigates. So what the county does is just ensure that that board exists and has the obligation to enforce its restrictions.
Okay, so before we then, let's assume that this is to the liking of the planning commissioners. How do we establish the information that you just gave to me prior to approving something like what is in front of us now?
Well, go, go for it.
So with all subdivisions, all major subdivisions, it's a requirement to create a HOA and create covenants and restrictions for that HOA. They are due to the county at time of platting. And so when the plat is, comes in, they have to supply developers' agreements and an HOA document with covenants and restrictions that are sent to the county attorney for review. And then, once those documents are recorded, we can release the plat to allow them to plat the neighborhood.
But then is it, but then is it your responsibility, I'm not picking on you particularly, I'm just saying, is it then the county's responsibility to enforce those regulations?
Go back to you. So, so at that point, once, once the HOA is established, so as part of the process of allowing the subdivision to be built, the county will have evidence submitted to it that the HOA has been established, and it's recorded what's called a declaration of restrictive covenants, right? And one of those restrictions in the recorded declaration will be, no one, you know, over the age of fifty-five will ever, but, you know, in accordance with the Fair Housing Act. Because, you know, generally speaking, it is illegal for you to say, "I only want certain types of people to live in my neighborhood." One exception of that is the, is the Fair Housing Act, which says you can make these age-restricted communities based on these certain laws. So the declaration will state those laws and state those restrictions. Once the county says, okay, the HOA has been established, and the declaration's been recorded, which means it's binding on every single lot in that neighborhood, then the county's involvement is pretty much done. Then it's up to the HOA to enforce its declaration. Now, importantly, the HOA has a duty to do that, right? HOAs have to enforce their declarations. But the county wouldn't have any standing to go in and say, "You're failing to do this. You have to do it," other than to say, you know, "You're violating this proffer." And I think if it got to a point where this had become a, you know, teen hotspot or something, you know, the county could say, "Well, look, you, you've proffered that you will establish an HOA, require, you know, governing the enforcement of your, of these restrictions, and you're not doing that." So I think it could come to that. But on a day-to-day basis, it's gonna be the HOA's responsibility.
The HOA is the one that basically, in other words, I don't wanna put any more responsibility on the county than, than is necessary. I'm just saying, though. So basically, once they establish that HOA, that HOA is responsible for whatever those covenants and restrictions were agreed to.
Right. One of which will be the, the age restriction. And, and to your point, Mr. Young, just to clarify, you know, under the Fair Housing Act, I mean, it, you know, I think this proffer says they'll just comply with the Fair Housing Act. If you're, you know, fifty-seven, and you die, and you're married, and your spouse is fifty-one, they can continue to live in the house. So there are exceptions to that rigid fifty-five and up rule that allows some flexibility in the event of a, of passing. So I just thought I'd add that.
Thank you.
Mr. Wilson, I did have one more question. I don't know who you or the owners could answer this. Okay, so under the HOA, how would that, how would that work for long-term care? If I needed long-term care, and I had a thirty-six-year-old that needed to live with me to take care of me?
That would just, you could do that. But I mean, you'd have set up a hospital bed, it'd be your own, you know, what you do within the confines of your own unit. That's up to you, and you just have one round-the-clock care coming. That's what they did with my parents and so on. But, but that's up to them. You, you're not gonna stop that. Usually, if you, if you want assisted care, you're gonna go to another facility. This is like a step in that long process. And I wouldn't suggest that, but it could be done. You have that option.
Okay. Just curious. Thank you.
Commissioners, anything further? Thank you, Mr. Wilton.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. We're now gonna open a public hearing regarding RZ zero three, twenty twenty-four. Public hearing is now open. Is there anyone wishing to speak? Is there anyone wishing to speak? Is there anyone wishing to speak? Seeing no one coming forward, public hearing is now closed. All right. Commissioners, any further discussion?
I have a question, Chairman. So with the increase at a parking spot in the public versus the private road, is that something we can vote? I mean, being that they presented to us something different than that, can we still vote on this tonight?
We could, however. I would be, we still have a V dot review that's outstanding, as well as a utilities review that is outstanding. And before we proceed with this, I would suggest that we defer this matter to our next meeting until those reports can be compiled and we have a complete package on it. And here again, maybe in updated proffers, we can address the concerns regarding Colonel Armistead Drive being a public roadway, as well as the twenty-foot length in driveway. So if we can get everything compiled into one packet, I, I think it would be more comfortable for everyone. Yes, sir.
I do wanna point out with the twenty-foot driveway comment, that we cannot make them do a twenty-foot driveway. That would be on the applicant to, to redraw the plans and show that. We can't force that twenty-foot driveway.
Correct. And I, I believe Mr. Wilton offered to comply with that. So if we can get it in writing, because if it's not in writing, it doesn't exist. So if we can get the proffers updated, I, I think we will be in better shape, as, as well as having the reports from the second review from V dot and utilities included, so that we have a complete package up to date that we can forward to the board.
I agree. I, that's the right way to do it. I think at this particular stage, we should defer this.
Mr. Chairman, was that a motion or a question?
That's in the form of a motion.
I second it.
Motion by the chair, seconded by Mr. Young and Mr. Weber. All those deferring this matter to our next meeting pending updates, all signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. This matter will be deferred to our next meeting so that we can get all of the updates, get all of the reviews done, and we have one complete package ready to go. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Wilton, thank you very much. Because I'm gonna tell you something. Your father built half of western Henrico County.
Yes, he was very prolific.
I think he even went into Goochland, maybe he.
Yeah, he was in Goochland, too. Yes, sir.
Powhatan, but your, your father really did a lot of building.
He worked hard. He did.
He did that. Thank you so much. We appreciate your appearance. All right, ladies and gentlemen, any and all matters. There being no any and all matters, is there a motion to adjourn to our September twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four meeting?
I moved that weird chair in.
Mr. Rollins made, made the motion, seconded by.
Seconded.
By Mr. Young and everyone else. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Motion carries. This meeting is adjourned.
Awesome.